It is important to acknowledge that wherever we are. We are meeting on the lands of First Nations people and so the traditional peoples in the land of Boulder. Are the Cheyenne, the Oropahoe, and the Utaid nations and so. I'd like to pay particular respects to elders past, present, and emerging leaders in these communities. And Diego will kind of start us off.
Thank you, Nayla. Um, so Nayla and I will be asking Councilwoman Sadebaka some questions tonight. For those who don't know us, Nayla and I are the co-presidents of the Latinx Law Students Association. Um, we will also be monitoring the Zoom chat for questions um as we move up the event. So if anybody has a question for the Councilwoman, go ahead and just um type it out in the chat. Uh, to kick us off, Councilwoman Sadebaka, thank you for joining us. Um, can you tell the audience a little bit about your background and your journey into politics?
Yes, uh, my name is Candy Sadebaka. I'm the Denver City Councilwoman for Denver's District Nine. Which um encompasses everything from our county line north in Adams County to Colfax. Um, including all of downtown Denver and our last black and brown pockets um. In historically black and brown communities. Um, I did not plan to run for office. I ran for office out of necessity and was really catalyzed. Uh, pretty early on in my life. Um, to stand up for my community. I went to Manuel High School, which was the site of the first. I guess experimentation with education reform and as a high school student. I experienced changes that happened to us uh without community input, without student input. Um, and after my freshman year, we, our school was turned into three schools within a school. Um, we lost all AP classes and electives. And so my, my journey into politics began there, um. Although it was uh unknown to me at the time. Eventually, I uh they, or DPS decided that that reform didn't work and I had already graduated from high school. Um, and so they proposed a shutdown. And I started organizing our community to file a class action lawsuit against DPS. To keep the school open and um. That was my first experiment with the third branch of government, the courts. And we ended up uh dropping the lawsuit because of politics. Because we were promised a process that would involve community. And were ultimately betrayed in the end. And in that betrayal, um, my nonprofit Project Voice was born. And Project Voice was designed to insert youth voice into policy. At the education level, but eventually it grew to insert youth voice into all kinds of different policies. Um, when I graduated from DU. I moved out to DC for about six years and came back to Denver. In twenty fourteen, which was kind of the height of change in our vulnerable neighborhoods that I'm from. I'm from Swansia. My family's been in this community for five generations. And um, my house was three blocks away from the I seventy expansion. And so I ended up getting sucked right back into community activism out of necessity to protect our, our house. Um, I live in my great grandma's house and we just couldn't lose it. Um, and that snowballed into my race for political office. And that's how I got here.
Thank you for sharing that. You know, my teacher once said. Um, you should never trust a politician that, you know, started out with the idea they're gonna get into politics. So it's always good to hear those unconventional stories where people come from.
Trust anyone who planned to do this for fun.
Yeah, no, I think that's great. Um, and then a little bit, you know. Um, I'd like to kind of move into, you know, what has the experience of being a Latina in, you know, city council been like? And you know, obviously there are challenges that come with it, but also what are the unique perspectives you think that you have? Being a Latina for Denver City Council.
That is an interesting question because we're in a. We have a historic amount of Latinas on council at one time in Denver. And what I think that we have proven to the public is what we've been saying all along. As Latinos, we are not a monolith. We were just conquered by the same uh people. And I think that um really plays out in a lot of what you can see in our decision making. Across Latinas on council and for me. Being a Latina has been. Less important than the intersection of being a Latina from a poor and working class community. Um, who was experimented on by the dominant power structure. And so when I talk about my Latinidad, it's. It's really more about intersectionality than just uh being Latina alone. It has been interesting because there's a new code word for. People of color in government. And those, that, those code words or that code phrase is activist legislator. Um, if you look at the way that um. Terminology gets thrown around throughout our country right now. It's really in reference to people of color who are governing. For the. And um, that to me, um. My experience has been shaped, obviously, at a more heightened level by white supremacy or Eurocentric ideology. About how one should govern. Um, about how one should engage with others. Um, and it's policed at a, at a different level than it ever was before. You know, as regular people in community, as black, brown, poor people. Were policed literally by police. Um, in government, it's a different dynamic and. It's more of a policing of the media. The media does that policing job. And that framing of the narrative about you. And so a lot of my. Um, experience on city council has been responding to a narrative that is shaped about me. Um, to either disprove it, explain it, uh justify it. But um amongst my colleagues. I, I feel often like my age plays into it as well. I'm the youngest person on city council. And um. Process gets weaponized, um decorum gets weaponized. Um. And my, and doing your homework, doing your homework is a way that um ageism plays into that. And so it's been an uphill battle, not an uphill battle I wasn't prepared for. Um, but definitely a, a battle on a, on a new level.
Yeah, thank you for being so vulnerable about that. I think a lot of people, especially people of color, even entering the legal field. Running into these issues of professionalism and what does that look like to people of color? And a lot of the time, those people who are, you know, rougher around the edges um tend to stand out and they, they tend to not fit in. And so, you know, thank you for addressing that. Um, a larger kind of issue that I'm, I would love to speak on or have you speak on specifically is. You know, there's this like monolith of Latinos, but really we encompass so many countries and, you know, ethnicities and races and so. Um, we kind of get grouped all together a lot of the time. Um, so being conscious of that going forward with this question. Um, you know, what the US determines as Latinos, we, we do have such a low voter turnout. Um, and you know, especially in places that are Latino heavy, you know, those populations don't go out to vote. And so, you know, with the upcoming election and, you know, every election that comes after that, how do we kind of motivate our communities and the communities that we're passionate about? To kind of keep hope in a system that maybe they don't have, believe in anymore because it wasn't designed for them. And so if you can kind of speak on that a little bit, I'd love to hear your thoughts.
Yeah, definitely. Um, I didn't grow up in a family or community that trusted the government. Or even participated um at any level in government processes. And so it wasn't something that, oops, sorry. It wasn't something that I was socialized to do. One second, one second. Sorry about that. It's my dad. I wasn't socialized to really appreciate government or trust government. Um, and for me, when I ran my race, it was, it was really interesting the way that I was. I guess advised to talk to voters. Um, we have this propensity in politics to only cater to high propensity voters. And so it's this um cycle that. Never caters to the people who are low propensity voters like Latinos. Um, and so they're never, they never feel engaged. They never feel listened to. Um, because we never spend money or any kind of resources, volunteer resources on turning them out. Uh, I won my race because we did the opposite. Um, I rejected all campaign um manager and political advisor advice. I refused to do it the way that I was being told to do it. And I spent a lot of time talking to people who there was no guarantee that they would vote. Um, people who had never voted in their lives. And we more than doubled voter turnout in my race. I didn't even have to steal a single supporter of my opponents. We built an entirely new base and um. It was magical, you know, to really, to, to see it in action. I had a seventy year old who had never voted in his entire life. And just sitting down and having a conversation with him and being able to relate to him in a way that no. Repres- represented, representative ever had compelled him to not only want to vote, but to vote for me. Um, and, and this is a trend we saw with young people. This is a trend we saw with um people who had been through the criminal justice system. Um, and I felt very proud of not having to try as hard to convince them as many political candidates do. I didn't have to try as hard because I already had deeply um embedded relationships in communities. That they were a part of. Um, it was easy for me to sit down in my neighborhood with any person and find a way to connect to them. Um, through somehow, through organizations, through other people. Um, through just historical knowledge about our community. And that was different than what we typically get. I, our last representative wasn't even from our neighborhood. And I think that makes a difference. So really knowing that when we're trying to do get out the vote. Um, that transactional relationship doesn't work with our traditionally non-voting communities. The transaction can't be about the vote. The transaction has to be um. A relationship that you're cultivating over time because you're listening to the individual. And meeting that person's needs or helping them figure out how to meet their own needs.
Thank you. Um, you mentioned about being policed and growing up in black and brown um communities. How did you experience the protests that are still happening, but that happened over uh police, police brutality and racial injustice? Did you experience some differently as a councilwoman, someone that's part of government now compared to someone who grew up in, in those um type of communities?
I got to see both sides of how um people respond. You know, I knew instinctively how I wanted to respond. And I responded the way my community responded. I was on the front lines with people getting tear gassed by. Uh, entities that work for us, that work for me, that have to report to me. And I also saw the background of how council members were afraid of protesters. How they were um making attempts to silence um the protesters, how they. Really made or went to extra lengths to protect um their own safety. Not recognizing that the movement was about. The lack of protection of an entire population's safety. And so it was really, it was really eye opening to me. Um. It confirmed what I had suspected all along. Um, and even. It, it disillusioned me a lot more to, to see the inside response. But also fueled me uh to be more determined to change. The, the structure and the way it responds and the way we allow it to respond. Because we, we forget that we own the structure. We own the city. We own the streets. We own the police. Uh, we just don't feel empowered or we don't necessarily know how to exercise. That ownership over something that feels so nebulous.
And um, do you have any proposed solutions to, to get over it, to, to make the change?
Absolutely. Um, I've been in a lot of trouble for it actually. Um, because I have this um desire to. Teach people how to pivot their energy um in that protest scene to. Policy and have been really successful doing that. Um, at every single protest, you know, if I got the opportunity to speak. I really served as a translator for people to understand how to um take their action to the next level. How if they were barely getting engaged for the first time, they moved to step two um to change the situation. And um, we got a massive amount of protesters to start attending city council. We got a massive amount of protesters to um. Hold elected officials accountable when they didn't even know who their elected officials were. And I got in trouble for that because, you know, my colleagues are used to sitting in chambers with one or two people. Um, and, and maybe a couple more from the agencies who are presenting to us. Um, it's very insular. And the minute we had hundreds of protesters coming to city council and demanding an opportunity to speak. We had to change our public comment structure. We had to make it every week instead of bi-weekly. We had to um make, w- we've been um streaming it for people on different platforms. We used to just archive it in some city database that nobody knew how to access. And I started live tweeting on Twitter every meeting and I started live streaming the meetings on Facebook. And that, you know, created unprecedented levels of community engagement in our meetings and we can count it now. We can look down at a Zoom participant number and see two hundred people on a call. We, and so that is, is really, I think, how we. Pivot to a vision of people owning their own government and demanding democracy. Um, in a country that promises democracy.
Thank you for speaking on that. And you know, I, I enjoy your perspective on that as well and I think it's really honest. And a lot of the times, it's just what people want is that honesty from the politicians they sometimes don't get. And so, um, yeah, thank you for speaking on that. Um, personally, I recently kind of made that move down to Denver from. Broomfield Boulder and you know, the, the first thing that kind of shocked me was the housing crisis going on in Denver. And so, um, I know you've been working really hard to decriminalize homelessness and a lot of, you know, your work, you've caught a lot of backlash for. And so I was wondering if you'd be willing to speak on kind of your perspective as a member of this community for, you know, how many generations now? Five?
Five.
And you've probably seen it transform, you know, from the moment you were born. So I'd love to hear your perspective.
Yeah, you, you know, homelessness was not. Part of my platform or anything. I was inspired to run. Um, in order to protect my students who were being displaced through gentrification. Um, but homelessness in the Latino community um doesn't look the same way. Um, we culturally, that is one thing that I think can be a little bit different with us. If we have someone on the verge of homelessness in the Latino community, they're just couch surfing with every relative they know, you know? Um, it looks different and. So for my kids, you know, we were addressing homelessness without um thinking about it in the way that people are perceiving it in Denver now. And um, the Initiative Three Hundred was on the ballot at the same time that I was on the ballot. And the Initiative Three Hundred was a community-led, citizen-led initiative where you collect thousands of signatures. Um, to get something on the ballot. And um, it colored my entire race. It was definitely a messaging point for. Uh, dividing people's votes. And so because it was on the ballot at the same time, every single forum, every single thing that we did. Ended up being focused on, do you support Three Hundred or not? And for me, it was frustrating because it was. A moment where it didn't matter if I supported it or not. You get to vote on it. That is the point of sending it to you on the ballot. You are not sending it. It's not something that thirteen council members get an opportunity to change without your voice. You get to decide. Um, and a lot of money went into that campaign to protect the camping ban, which criminalizes homelessness. And I fundamentally do not believe in criminalizing poverty. I am not only someone who grew up in poverty and at many times in my life, you know, was. This close to, to homelessness, being under a bridge myself. I, I am a social worker and you know, some of us in some professions have a code of ethics that we actually follow. And my code of, code of ethics is do no harm. And what I felt like the camping ban does was it creates harm. It further cripples or harms people who are already struggling. And so, of course, my answer during the campaign was no, I, I don't support um criminalizing homelessness. I, I support the citizen-led initiative. Um, and I personally will be voting to support it. But you can vote how you want and that is the beauty of a democracy and the chips were, will fall where they may. But it, it has been an ongoing issue and. In my opinion, um, it's an ongoing issue because I was right in the election and the voters voted wrong. Um, we had this perception that the camping ban solved homelessness. Um, most people didn't understand what it did. Most people um had no clue what even causes people to be homeless. And we had had the camping ban in place for eight years when Three Hundred was on the ballot. And so eight years, we had proof that it wasn't working or solving the problem. Um, since my election, there's this really funny twisted phenomenon that happens. People think that I actually, one, ran on the camping ban, like it was a platform piece. And that I have repealed the camping ban. And it's, it's funny to me because. It was what I was saying all along. This is not solving the problem. This is part of the problem. But people don't necessarily dive that deep. They try to find the easiest thing to blame for the problem. And so they're actually getting what they voted for. Um, and that is the camping ban that doesn't really solve the problem. That just really forces the city to spend its resources on moving people a block or two for. A week or two and it doesn't change anything. Um, I have tried to convince my colleagues to put into place other solutions, other. Um, mechanisms to get people into housing faster. And have not been successful. And sadly, it's getting a lot worse with COVID. We have hundreds of thousands of pending evictions in this state. And we don't know what to do with that. We don't even have enough shelter beds for the current amount of homeless people we have. Even if they're, like, we've seen the shelters full. And so we know that when this eviction moratorium is lifted. And we actually have a massive amount of evictions being implemented. This problem that we thought was a problem is gonna grow exponentially overnight. And what is unfortunate about our world is that sometimes people don't care until they're affected by the thing. And I, I feel like sadly, we're not gonna give a shit until we're out there under a bridge somewhere ourselves.
Yeah, I, I definitely, first of all, I think a lot of us are frustrated, you know, a lot of us, it's the reason we came to law school, right? It's because, you know, a lot of the time, there doesn't seem to be any solutions and so we tried to go the legal route. So we'll see kind of where that takes us, but.
To tell you, I also get in trouble a lot because I believe that when. When two branches of government are failing the people, you've got one other branch to lean on and that is the judicial branch, the courts. And I have in multiple situations, including the thing with DPS, the thing with I seventy. I have personally had to lean on the third branch of government um for any kind of movement. And I get in trouble because when I can't move my colleagues and the executive branch is not moving. I help people use the third branch of government because I believe in what you guys are trying to do. I believe in the third branch of government and appreciate what you're doing because it's literally been the only way we've forced. The legislative and the executive branch to act.
Yeah, thank you for saying that. I think that, first of all, every, all the one else should write that down. Whenever, you know, there's gray days and, you know, everything seems like it's impending doom, you know, just remember. Um, and also, you know, something that you mentioned, I think it, it was really curious to me is. You know, you mentioned that like back and forth with your colleagues on the Denver City Council. And I imagine, you know, you must be put into some pretty frustrating situations. Um, and so what is that like working with people who, you know, fundamentally sometimes go against everything you believe in? And you still have to come to some sort of resolution?
It was something I anticipated. Um, I don't know, since most of you are in Boulder. Um, I heard at the begin, I overheard somebody off a mute at the beginning of the call talking about, I don't know why they invited her. She's not even from Boulder. But um, so you guys probably weren't paying a lot of attention to our Denver elections. But when I ran, I knew that we weren't gonna make. Changes with just me getting elected. And so when we ran, we ran a slate of individuals for multiple seats. Um, and um, my biggest fear, and I tell this to people all the time, was not losing. My biggest fear was winning alone and that is exactly what happened. And so. Working on council um as the only person sometimes. Uh. Forces me to have some different levels of change that I'm trying to achieve. There's the change that I can achieve with my colleagues on council. But the broader change that I work on outside of council is um collective power building. And if we're building community power. Then we have a better shot next time getting those seats in the hands of community who will make a difference. Um, even if I'm not on that seat, we're opening up. Uh, a whole new world to people to make change and win. Before I got into council, I had been part of a citizen-led ballot initiative um to do campaign finance reform. My race was the most expensive race to run next to the mayor. And I, I had to win with a quarter of the resources. Um, and the, and a quarter of the resources meant that in one year, I had to raise over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Just to even be able to compete and it was such an unlikely win with a quarter of the resources. Um, that, you know, I knew we had to change that finance structure before I even got in there. And so winning, I think, with a quarter of the resources shows other people that, one, it's possible. But two, now we have the campaign finance reform that also passed at the same time. Um, and people who run uh with that campaign finance, um, it's called the Fair Elections Fund. Every single small donation that they raise under, I think it's a hundred and fifty dollars. Has to be matched nine to one by the city. So that not only are candidates running, but we're creating a real possibility of winning. And leveling the playing field. And so that was my win on Monday. Um, that we uh. Had a situation where some of my colleagues. Misinterpreted or intentionally misinterpreted, defund the police. And instead, we're trying to defund fair elections. And so they were trying to gut that fund in its first year of implementation because. because I I believe they're recognizing this ground swell of people who are ready and willing to take their seats. Um, and so on Monday, I was able to um, fight and actually win to protect that fund.
That's great. Um, you mentioned that the judicial branch and most of us being law students here obviously have some goals to get to there. But some people come to law school to have a life in politics, maybe. Um, what do you think, um, when you're coming up with policy or just in politics general? Does it, what role does your education come into it? Or do you base most of your decisions on your life experiences?
Oh, well, I think it's helpful to know that I was pre-law. Um, I wanted to go to law school um, to do exactly what I'm doing, um, not the politician part of it, but I wanted to do um, civil rights law, constitutional law, education law. And um, I took a year off after I finished my master's degree and went to DC um, and worked as a non-attorney, the only non-attorney on an attorney team to really decide if I wanted to pursue that. And I remember, and don't get discouraged here, but I remember um, I I had a mentor who was an attorney and told me this is the part of the law that you need to know for the work that we do. Study it, learn it, um, you'll be fine. And if you're considering law school, just remember um, how fast do you learn this piece of the law that you're practicing every day and decide if you wanna fight the same fight every single day and in many ways uphold the status quo and pay off hundreds of thousands of dollars of debt for the rest of your life. Um, and so I spent a few years doing that and recognized pretty quickly that the way um, knowledge of the law plays out in in the field um, is much more narrow um, than what you're exposed to and what you pay for in law school. Um, you pick an area of expertise and you like go as deep as you possibly can, but that's not impossible without law school. And in in many ways, the debt that you attach yourself to in law school um, creates the barriers to the good that you might do in the world because the the good that you might do in the world is the kind of law that doesn't necessarily pay the salaries we want or pay off that debt that we have. And so coming from a background like mine, I was debt averse. I did not want to go into debt for that. And maybe I made the right decision, maybe I made the wrong decision, but when I am contemplating policy, trying to understand policy, uh, trying to understand the laws, I lean on my attorney friends, but it's not like I don't know how to research the law, how to understand the law, um, how to apply the law and what laws need to change. And that's the part that I really care about. Um, I care less about understanding and applying the law as it was written, um, and more about what it should be now. And so I use our attorneys, my chief of staff, Dr. Calderon is, um, she went to law school. She's not a practicing attorney. But, you know, we we lean on people who have legal expertise to do what we wanna do. But sometimes it's people with le legal expertise who are our biggest barriers. Um, our city attorney, for example, you know, the biggest law firm in the city of Denver is the city of city of Denver's City Attorney Office. And um, they're often our biggest barrier to making changes because of their sh understanding of a strict application of law and what is possible and what potential exists for change.
Thank you for that answer. And as not as not as future lawyers, but uh, just as individuals, um, what do you think we can do as individuals to propel positive change in our communities?
Don't be those lawyers. Don't, don't be the lawyers who get so indoctrinated um, by law school that you become so rigid in your ideology or rigid in your um, imagination of of the world that could be. Um, I I feel like, especially as law students, I know you guys don't have a lot of time or um, opportunities to do things for free. But we, our entire I seventy lawsuit, um, we leaned on the law students at CU Boulder. Um, it was a lot of the research for our case was a project that a professor gave them. Um, we definitely have have been able and fortunate to engage with attorneys who want to help and change the world. And so when you have the time and ability and flexibility to do that, do it. Um, you guys can help us. And I feel like sometimes when we get to these high places in the world, the boards, the the cha, the the positions that we get become more important than what we do in those positions. And so when we get these positions on boards and of foundations and all kinds of stuff, we wanna stay there. So we don't necessarily want to shake it up. We don't necessarily wanna challenge anyone's thinking about how things are done. Don't be that person either. Um, know and take with you the confidence of your education, the confidence of your lived experience and stay rooted in what you got into this to to do. If you got into it to change the world, um, changing the world is gonna mean that you're not always liked. It's gonna mean that you're not sometimes you're gonna have to reframe your concept of success. Because changing the world um, in our current paradigm makes some assumptions about success that we have to challenge ourselves.
Thank you for that. And just to be clear, I think a lot of us don't know if we made the right choice and come to law school either.
Every law student says that.
Especially at this point in the semester, but that kind of leads into my next question. Uh, and this is a conversation that's been a little bit of a difficult conversation, but one that keeps coming up with um, a lot of BIPOC law students. And it's, you know, how do we reconcile the idea of becoming attorneys? And I think you can, you have this experience with, you know, becoming a city council member as we take part in these systems that really are meant to, you know, uh, exclude and oppress communities of color, like they were built on the backs of communities of color. And so how do we then, you know, take part in them and kind of push them forward? And so I'd like to hear a little bit about your motivation to kind of know, reform instead of tear down.
You know, my um, my best friends, my closest acquaintances are all attorneys. Um, I've got a friend in the EEOC. I've got a friend in the Public Defender's Office. My chief of staff is an attorney. One of my best friends runs the Colorado Freedom Fund, like all of the people around me, um, have the legal training that you all are are obtaining and a couple, half of them, I would say are practicing and the other half are not practicing. And the ones who are practicing are also having like these existential crises every single day, like, am I in the right job? Am I helping the the people that I I set out to help or am I making the problem worse? And um, what I, what I tell them is that it's not about you by yourself in that space. It's about all of us in these different spaces having a coordinated agenda and a common vision. Because when we can tap each other in our respective spaces um, to knock down a a domino to to cause a chain reaction or to back each other up, that is what makes us effective. If you constantly see yourself as an individual disconnected from the collective, um, I don't think that we will ever feel like we're making the changes that we want. We just have to know that change can be ma be made in any lane that we choose in life. If you're an artist, you can be a part of this political process. You can be directly connected to attorneys translating what they're trying to say to the world um, to digest in a more accessible fashion. There's a lane for every single one of us. We just have to be more sophisticated in our coordination about how to make change. Um, instead of feeling like we always have to choose a lane and operate in a silo.
Thank you. And then may I say, you sound so kind of sure of yourself now, and you've developed this confidence. And I think your your platform and yourself as a person, as a councilwoman, and so I'd kind of know, like to hear a little bit about your journey there. You know, did you always start out this way with, you know, this much resolution to create positive change or was it a struggle, you know?
Oh, if my mom, if my biological mom was alive, she'd probably say I came out of the womb determined, you know? I I was the, I'm the oldest of my siblings and um, was raised by my great grandma and my grandma. And my great grandma was one of thirteen kids. She was a sharecropper and outlived all of her siblings and most of their kids. And so having these really strong matriarchs around me um, and multi-generational households, um, I think instilled in me a sense of purpose that some of my peers who didn't have that don't have. Um, it was hard for them to see their place in a generational context. It was hard for people to find their purpose as fast as I did because they didn't have, you know, someone telling them about their ancestors, someone describing their life and their struggles and their challenges. For me, you know, I had that since day one and outsiders might have perceived that as a deficit, you know? Kids who get raised by their grandparents are often perceived as being behind or missing something. And that, to me, was the best thing I ever had. It made me so sure of the fact that, one, I've been here before, like this is I'm in this body right now, but this is not the only life that I've lived. Um, two, I have generational or ancestral obligations. But three, I have ancestral memory. I have like, just like muscle memory. When you can tap into your ancestral memory, it's almost like you learn all of the things that they had to go through and how they survived them and how they'll push forward and how you'll push forward. And that, to me, I think is what always keeps me so um, so separate in a lot of ways from the temptation to to lose myself, the temptation to be someone that I'm not. And it keeps me fierce. It keeps me fierce because I know I'll get another chance. I know I'll get another life. I'll be back on this planet again and I'll build again on what I've built now. And that's just the way it goes. I don't live my life for right now. I live my life for what I'll leave for the next generation.
Thank you. And uh, we're almost towards the, towards the end, so maybe one or two questions left. But one of my questions, because a lot of people say twenty twenty's been the worst year ever with the election, the COVID nineteen pandemic with the protests. So it has been a crazy year, but do you feel there's any important lessons or silver linings that that we can take that it's positive?
So many, um, I I don't believe that that um, it's been all bad. Honestly, I've seen some of the most radical ideas um, catch on out of necessity. When we when we talk a lot about politics, we get stuck in our boxes of Democrat Democrat ideology versus Republican ideology. And um, we get really rigid um, in our economic structure of capitalism and we don't realize that there was a time when neither of those things existed. Um, and there is hopefully a time when they won't exist anymore in the future. But COVID has put us in a position where the whole entire world is feeling the same thing and literally overnight stopped. And nothing disappeared, nothing like magically went away. Our house still stood around us. Our water was still running. The electricity could still flow. And none of it was dependent on this fake paper, this idea of money that we've attached ourselves to. And so what I think it is helping people realize is that one, money is not real. It was made up and we all agree to it, but it doesn't actually, um, it doesn't actually have to work the way that it has worked in the past. We invented trillions of dollars. Like, we literally just invented it. And um, people have learned how to share in a different way. The mutual aid networks that I saw form during quarantine were not only magical and inspiring, but representative of an entirely different economic structure that could exist. Um, the way that we've stopped driving to work every day and hurting the planet the way that we do with our car culture, the way that we've all of a sudden all started to take walks um, or garden or bake for our family or do things with our families, um. It changed our concept of time. It changed our concept of work. Um, there are so many amazing things happening that I hope we make a new normal out of. I don't wanna go back to normal. To me, as as jarring as twenty twenty has been to our psyche, um, I think that a new normal is being born and that new normal can be better for humanity. We have to evolve. And if we went away today, we haven't evolved in a special way that makes us different from Lucy, the first human being found. Like, nobody would dig us up and see us as different. They, and we need to like figure out how to start evolving as a people, how to start creating more than just things.
Thank you for that. And like, something I think that I really took away from kind of, you know, a little bit of your platform is too, is the idea of, you know, people over profit, right? And you know, this this new term has been thrown around, especially with this election and everything going on. It's community wellness and it's how do we, you know, increase community wellness? How do we move towards community wellness? And it's kind of an ambiguous term. Um, nobody really seems to know what it means in the end. Um, but I was wondering, you know, your your stance on that. How do we, we come to, you know, some sort of evolution of our communities? How do we progress as a society? And it's like, really charged question, but you know, as a as a Denver City Council, you do have a little bit of influence on, you know, policy issues that go on. So how do you kind of see us evolving?
Well, it's a timely question because we're in the middle of our budget planning for twenty twenty one. And um, while we're still in this space of attachment to money, um, prioritization of how we spend those dollars is a reflection of whether or not we're putting profit above people. Um, when you look at the split in our cities' budgets, it's pretty consistent across cities in the US. And you know, fifty percent of city budgets go to public safety and the larger slice going to police. Um, most cities don't really devote more than one or two percent of their city budget to housing. Um, there's often a much larger, maybe a quarter-sized chunk that goes to economic development. And I think that, you know, when you think about one percent of our budget going to housing people, putting a roof over people's head and a quarter going to business development and half of it going to public safety, like that is the perfect way to understand what profit Like, that is the perfect way to understand what profit over people looks like in a city's priorities. And so for me, really focusing on shifting the dollars is, I think, the first step to having people shift their ideology, um shift the economic system. Because once everybody has what they need, will we really fight to be on this wheel, this hamster wheel of nine to five job or two jobs just to pay a bill? Just to pay your bills to keep a roof over your head? And you only sleep under that roof for a fraction of your life? Like, it's this very toxic pattern that we get into where we're working, working, working to make money, money, money to keep a roof over our head, but we rarely get to be under that roof. We rarely get to be with our family. We rarely get to enjoy the fruits of our labor. I think when everybody has what they need, we will understand labor differently and we'll want to own our time and our labor in a different way and live different kinds of lives. I I work with students all the time and adults always ask them when they're growing, what do you want to be when you grow up? What do you want to be when you grow up? And to me, that is like such a limiting question for young people, but such a defining question. I always ask them, if you never had to work a day in your life, what would you want to do with your time? What would you do with all that time? And then we back map from there. Because form follows function. Like, if you're doing what you want with your time, if you're doing what you love with your time, we should be able to figure out how to exist with the, with basic human needs being met.
Thank you. That was really powerful and I think really encouraging to everybody in the audience. And not to give you a little bit of whiplash with our transition, but we do have a question from the audience. And that is, you know, do you ever struggle with imposter syndrome in your role as a city council member? And how do you cope with those feelings? Um, I'm sure, you know, it's it's difficult.
I think that I um struggled with imposter syndrome a lot more earlier on in my career. Going to college was probably the biggest culture shock I ever experienced, primarily because I was the first person in my family to graduate from even high school, but also one of like ten kids in my graduating class that went on to high school. I mean, that went on to college. And so for me, that culture shock or that coping um with imposter syndrome had to really happen that early on in order for me to make it any further. It was so paralyzing. I was valedictorian of my graduating class and got to college and had to take remedial math. And that to me was, as much as it made me feel like an imposter, it made me realize how the game was rigged. It didn't take me long to catch up and to get beyond that remedial math class. But what it showed me was that that opportunity was never offered to me. That level playing field was never available to me for a reason. And that reason was because I was supposed to be a worker, not a thinker. And so for me, when I'm in that space of um feeling like an imposter, I try to contextualize the situation. Why am I feeling like an imposter? Is it because I'm not going along with the crowd? Is it because I don't have the human capital, the the knowledge I need in this situation? Or is it because I feel like I'm lying to other people and myself? Those are usually like the three situations that make me feel like an imposter. And because I was able to figure out what was happening in in those three scenarios, it's easier for me to pinpoint it and address it quickly. And so for me, it's about fast, frequent feedback and having people around me who will give me that fast, frequent feedback and having the tools at my disposal to cope with those moments. All of you, you know, it, especially in law school, I can imagine, you know, it not feeling much different than being the only one in your college classes or eventually being the only one in your firm who thinks the way you do or being the only one on council who thinks the way you do. But that network, that social network that affirms why I'm doing what I'm doing is is always my security blanket. And those are the people who are always telling me, you're not an imposter, you're everything that we need right now. You're, you've got all of the tools that you need. And keep pushing. We're, we've got your back. We're right behind you. Cultivate that because it will carry you through.
I love that. Thank you. It really takes a town, our comunidad and our sense, right? Thank you. And then something, you know, to kind of end us a little bit. You know, politicians tend to become their platforms, right? They tend to become their policy decisions. They tend to become their, you know, their mistakes a lot of the time. And so what is something that you kind of want to end on um to this group of however many people that, you know, you'd want them to know that maybe that sometimes that come across in your interviews and your political speeches? Anything that, you know, you you haven't really had a platform to speak about?
I, I feel like I know that um I won't get the wins that I want um in my time on council. But I know, uh just like I have in other scenarios, I know that I'm kicking down doors that other people are gonna run through and I'm helping them equip themselves to run through those doors. And so for me, I just hope that people go deeper than the headline. Because I I do believe that my future-oriented goals are, will manifest themselves eventually. And I'm perceived as crazy and radical now. But I know one day, like, people are gonna benefit from the ideas that we're putting out there right now. And I just hope that all of you are unafraid to do that as well. I hope that you know that every single person that has come through this planet and changed it in their moment on this planet, they were probably not liked very much in the media. They were probably villainized every day. And that is a sign. As soon as somebody is villainized, it's always a cue for me to do my own digging to understand what it is that's really being villainized. Because it's often just change that gets villainized. And not necessarily, it's not necessarily about the person. It's our resistance, that deep-seated resistance to change. And so I just hope people know that um I am literally trying to build a better world for all of us.
Thank you, that answer. Uh, we conclude the chat. Once again, I want to thank you, Councilwoman Seda Baca for joining us tonight. I want to thank the CU Law administrators and Dingus Man who helped set everything up. And finally, thanks for those who joined us. Um, we worth, hope it was a worthwhile experience.
Thank you so much for being here.
And I'm putting my phone number in the chat if you guys ever want to reach out. Ever wanna connect on anything or ask questions? I know I'm in Denver, but um hopefully some of you guys will come down to Denver and maybe move down here into my district and be a part of what we're trying to create.
Yeah, let us know if you ever need canvassers. I'm sure a lot of us would love the hours and, you know, getting to know you a little bit better.
Well, I'm good until twenty twenty-three, but I'm sure I'm gonna need it.
Sounds good.
Take care, everybody.
You too.